...
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
I'm here. We're looking for a motion to excuse Councilwoman Richman and Councilwoman Pierce, please.
So move.
Motion we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The votes, they are excused. We have a spot on our agenda now, and we have a spot on our agenda at the end of the meeting for public comments. So if anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now, or at the end of the meeting. Do we have anyone? Thee done, we'll move into our consent agenda. If you're aye, then reconsider the routine. We'll take it with one motion, unless someone on council or someone in the audience wants to remove, prefer the discussion, or clarification. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our minutes of February 24th, Planning Commission minutes of February 3rd, Rec Board minutes of January 8th, Housing Commission minutes of February 11th, BPU minutes February 5th, BPU financial reports for January, our financial reports for January, and a memo for me regarding some appointments for reaffirmance. Over to the items on our consent agenda tonight, would anyone in the audience like any to move? Anyone at council?
Yes, I would like the board to...
So we look for a motion, if there's no others, we look for a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 7.
So move. Support.
We have a motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 8 is a memo regarding four appointments, Councilwoman Richman?
Yes, I just have a little question. I know in our city charter, we have sent a plea for clarification where it states in a portion of it regarding where civilian employees can't sit on more than one board. What was emailed back to me was there was an attorney that maybe some time ago that those were only in relationships to the library and recreation board. I would like to have a discussion about having that apply to all of our board positions and things. Because one of those things where one individual should only sit on one of those boards sufficient to work.
And, and the double appointment would be Terry Bogga, realizing you could do the Brownfield, when we started that discussion, where he was appointed to the Brownfield board, he's very rarely, but does anyone know when the last time that board met?
1951.
You know?
That okay, not prequel, in fact, not before three years that I've sat in this position, but.
Well, yeah. Where the discussion will I have?
It's not so much the individuals that are taking their bundle, or that sit on multiple boards right now. I'm not experienced enough with their qualifications, I just would like to have a discussion regarding all of the different authorities and boards and provisions. Whereas, you know, we have a lot more diverse, so many of the candidates, which is slightly over 10,000, some of the boards allow for others outside of civilians. And I just wanted to move into the conversation, I don't know what was discussed in the past, or how that comes about regarding why individuals can sit on multiple boards.
I think you'd also have to look at the purpose of those boards and authorities, because it might be better to look at what that authority of board does, and who's important in the position, not necessarily the person on it. For instance, Terry superintendent of school, there may be some tax issues here, so you want the co-large superintendent, and it might result in me on two. So I think the purpose of those would be helpful to have as we have this discussion, because then it would make some sense.
Could we have, anybody else have other boards that have multiple?
May I speak to you first? So I heard about this question this morning, and I have a little bit of time here at the end of the day, and I took to some research. And I found a 2004 opinion from the city attorney to Phil Stewart at the time, that the provision which is in the charter, the 1963 charter, created the library board and the recreation board, and said each of such boards, and then gave a list of things that apply to those two boards, five members, five years, turn their minutes in to the clerk, and midway down, one of those paragraphs that begins with each of such boards, it says, "Except as otherwise provided by this charter, no person shall serve on more than one board of a city. The terms of the members shall be for five years and shall be so arranged, so that one member of each board shall expire in each year." The opinion that I read this afternoon from 2004 was that the paragraph commences with a statement each of such boards, and refers to those two boards that were created in the charter. It does not address the many boards that have come into being under statute, and as you know, some of those boards under statute, like Alleva, have required positions on them. They require officers from different city governing bodies, then county in some cases. And I would say that at this point, from my point of view, the paragraph begins each of such boards, and it has, that is right below the creation of two boards, the library board and the recreation board. As far as I know, people have been appointed to multiple boards for in excess of two decades. I don't know, I did not have the time to go back and research when different boards came into being, or whether they all follow the par- five members, each of whom serves for five years, I don't think that they do, but. So as far as evaluating every board against this provision in the charter, I'm not prepared to speak to that, but I do believe that the paragraph definitely begins each of such boards, and the only boards that are mentioned here are the library board and recreation board. So my response is to support the opinion from 2004.
Would be nice to know. We do not want, again, the same person serving on major board, I don't think we, I'd be curious of how many we, Brownfield, Lipton are a little different than Planning Commission, Recreation, maybe DDA, I would, again, I'd like a little more information before we change our faculty. We don't have multiple people serving on multiple city boards, that does not, we have some examples, but I'm not defending that, I'm more than willing to follow changing it, I guess I'd like to know what, how many duplicates we really have, and are they uniquely, if that's okay with you, could we do a little research and bring this back?
Yes, no, yes please. Great.
Any other input, Tony?
I would be suggested we do a lot of our boards, look at complaints, and then also review the language on the other boards to see if, or if not, any of that does comply, or repetitious or not, and get us a better handle, and make sure that we don't, or we are complying with it as best we can, or we aren't.
Well, again, not making excuses, but it's a difficult job trying to talk citizens into serving on a lot of these boards, they're not that rewarding, they're, you're doing it for service, but, but, so I don't, I do all these appointments, or make a lot of them, I don't, can't recall many duplicates, and maybe we need to make that policy though, so it's not just accidentally, and I, I think we're all more than willing to look at it, if that's, so if we do some analysis over the next few weeks, and bring back a kind of a summation, and bring it up again, and maybe have them up, is that okay?
Yeah, I appreciate that, yes, thank you.
I would be curious if we do have a lot of duplicates, I just suspect we don't, but it's good to look at. That being said, are we okay with that? We have a motion to approve item 8 on the agenda?
So...
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 9, those accounts, tonight we're being asked to approve $143,486. Tom is here, Jeffrey's here, I think Tom's here, yeah. Anybody have any questions, sir, or now, Mr.? Don, motion pair, those would be nice.
We have your favor, Bill.
Support. We have a motion, we have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, City Manager Report, Keith.
Thank you, Your Honor, good evening, everyone. First, we'd like to make note that there was an error, a typo in the 2020 property tax assessment notices that recently were sent out to our property owners. There is a value that is referenced at 1.029 instead of 1.19, except for the fact that the actual value calculations are correct, but the multiplier should have been referenced at 1.019. If there are any questions, if any property owners have a question related to that, so the values are correct, there was a typo in the notice, and it actually represents a lower value, but if you have any questions about that, we want to direct those to our city assessor's office. Secondly, we'd like to welcome, she's been on the, she's been in place for a couple weeks, but we'd like to welcome Sue Baldinger to the receptionist position at the City Hall here, at the Henry O'Brien Municipal Building. She replaces recently retired Cheryl Robinson. Sue has worked for the last several years as a part-time basis with the Recreation Center, the Robert W. Brown Recreation Center, so we look forward to Sue being with our team full-time, and welcome her to the building. We want to let our residents know that they may notice work going on on North Michigan Avenue, which will eventually work its way down South Michigan Avenue, and Park Street as well, by ITC. ITC trucks are in and around Michigan Avenue, currently, they're replacing wooden electrical poles with metal electrical poles, as part of the upgrade to their infrastructure and the transmission lines, and so we just want to make the residents aware that that will be underway, or is underway, and that will be, work will continue through the course of the summer. Ultimately, this is to help culminate in having the third redundant source of power to our electric system, and it also interconnects some of our various substations, including the newest one on Butter's Avenue, which will also be under construction this summer. Secondly, just a reiteration, we've mentioned this a couple times, but the city's email server will be discontinued in a couple months, and so we'll be just making aware of that, and that's just email, there's no other services, that's just email. And the BPU does have staff that can help customers transition from the cbpu.com email address to a different email address. And then a couple positive notes, the city is participating in a couple grants, or has received a couple grants, the first of which is through the St. Joseph River Watershed Water Quality Project Grant, it's a long name, but what it does is, it's, it's almost an extension of the work that we devised here with the tree inventory, this is actually with the same company, the St. Joseph River Watershed Organization is sponsoring this, the city, what the city gets out of it is quite a bit of technical assistance, a report on the, on the urban canopy, as well as 50 trees to plant as part of a community project later this year, so just the value of the trees is 70, 7 to 8,000 dollars, and we'll be doing a planting blitz in the fall of this year, and there'll be more information to follow, but we are one of six communities selected along the St. Joseph River Watershed, the Coldwater River and the likes of the Joiness eventually reach the St. Joe River, and so that's why we were incorporated into that project. And then lastly, part of the MISHDA grant that resulted in the construction of the home at 74 Thompson, we also received $40,000, excuse me, for single-family residential repairs and other upgrades in the neighborhood immediately surrounding that, so we'll be notifying those neighbors within that area that, that program is eligible, and seek participants for that. And that's my report.
Keith, could you elaborate a little bit on MISHDA grant? It says it needs strong area of talking within so many feet or anywhere in that.
So in our, in our grant application, we identified essentially from Smith to Seeley to Morse, to, or structure abilities, or the east side, so. So it incorporates Central Park Drive, Seeley, Smith, some of the side streets off of that, Morse.
And are you guys considering, or are you guys, what type of improvements you're concerned to use that funds for?
So the grant allows up to $7,500, and it could be any type of exterior repairs.
Is that...
Bronson received a similar grant earlier this year, late last year, and now the, the participants have to meet a certain income qualification as well, but they could be, it is a grant to the, to the residents, so there again, more information to follow, and we'll get applications made available to those that are interested, but it would be a grant, it's to, to owners within that defined area, and it's up to $7,500 for exterior repairs.
Can we administer that internally, when we make the decision on who gets?
Yes.
And so it's like, exterior, so rust, windows, siding, painting, lumber?
Yeah. Porches, storm doors, and several things.
Is that a lump, or is that?
A grant.
Right. That's straight money?
Yeah.
And is it exterior facing the road with the person, you can't do stuff, or like in your yard?
No, it's, it's exterior, obviously, we're trying to, the intent of this, this money is to help solidify our, the, both the appearance standpoint, but also the physical maintenance of the, of the home.
Do you know the income eligibility of that line, or?
No, it's out of my head.
But that'll be on the website, this information?
Yeah, we'll get it out, we were just notified last week, so just wanted to make reference to it, so.
Well, I'll do that internally, maybe.
So, Dean, yeah, Dean.
And then who's going to make the decisions on who gets how much?
So it will come, the homeowners will have to apply, they'll, essentially, what other communities have done has been a first come, first served process. They meet qualifications, they have to get three bids, and then, once they get awarded that, then they can go get notified by the city.
But is that like, the first come, first served is how it works, and they're supposed to have a deadline for application, and then, that's what they do, they do a first come, first served?
I believe so. In announcing, in announcing this, I wasn't quite prepared for the, for all the, for all the details, but we'll get that in front of you as well, as we're rolling it out.
You'll make a recommendation on how to do this?
Yes, yes, definitely based on this conversation.
Keith, question on that CBPU email, the test has been, notices have given several times to prevent a decrease of quality of repairs until, until.
Thank you. So there's roughly around 300 people who still have to be using that, give or take, sometimes, we probably monitor when they access it, so you might still have an active account, but you didn't access it for the last six months, but you still have one that account, so it's a little bit hard to judge.
How many are active with those 300?
Yeah, it's about 300 active, but most everybody's been notified, this is the first official notification that we've actually sent out, because we're actually trying to make sure that we get all our ducks are off, so at this point, it just doesn't make sense.
Question on the City Manager Report, Don, a motion to approve it, please, in order.
Motion approved.
Support. We have a motion and support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Report accepted. Number 11, it's with deep regret, I think I speak for most of us, and not all of us, that we've had a letter from Councilman Chris Pierce, tendering his resignation from City Council for personal reasons. I, Chris has served on this council for over 20 years, and, again, I'll speak for myself, but I think you, most of you, I've served his citizens and the people in the second ward very admirably, and he will be missed. With that being said, our normal procedure, if it's acceptable to everyone, is the council person in the ward will be collecting resumes, applications, interests, in filling the term, which I believe is almost over a year, almost a year and a half, if not a little more, till the next city election.
Next November.
This fall, November.
Year from now.
Yeah, so, rather long-term. So if anyone knows, if anyone in the second ward is interested, we would urge them to contact Councilman Knott. I'd also ask Don, if they would please specify that in an article, that any interest parties are urged to contact Councilman Knott, and then he will gather names and come back to us in a, as quickly as he can with a recommendation. Up to us to appoint, but we have traditionally accepted the recommendation of the council person, so, a lot of his prison shoulders, shoulders, so. So anyway, it's an important thing, and anybody interested, please get ahold of the councilman or not, so. We do unfortunately need a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of Chris Pierce.
And we make the motion.
Support, Don. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 12, letter from Keith Baker regarding electric utility system revenue bonds.
We plagiarized Jeff's memo, so I'll let Jeff speak. Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. In front of you is the bond ordinance, at this point, we are looking to go and sell bonds for two purposes. The first one is to finance the construction of Butter's, or the proposed Butter's Electric Substation, that is $5.5 million, is what we're looking to borrow. We actually leave tomorrow for our bond ratings, so the bonds will be sold sometime around either late April, early May, is when we expect to finance those. Especially now, we're actually getting the market at probably the best time ever, because obviously historical rates have dropped again, we're looking at rates, they'll probably 1.5% interest rate for, and that's the, that's the net interest cost for about 20 years, hindsight, which is what for 40 years. So again, these bonds are being sold at historically low interest rate environment, it doesn't get any better than this in order to borrow money, you're for a one-case sufferer, but other than that, it's good for the city and the BPU. The second half of that is actually $11.8 million, we're requesting that, is to finance the, the sale, and I say that loosely, because we've always owned it, we've always paid 100% of the cost, and all that does is move the debt from the MISHDA substation power agency over to the balance sheet of the, or pump utilities. There is no increased operating cost, this is purely just moving that debt over to our books off their books, it does a couple, it has significant benefits to both projects, but again, with that being, if that answers any questions, I know we've talked about this in the past, if that answers any questions you would have.
What is Project Four?
Oh, I'm sorry, Project Four is the natural gas plant on Butter's Avenue. This was debt that was done at a bank rate, wasn't done on the open market.
Fillmore Road.
Yeah, Fillmore Road, thank you, let's say, let's say, yeah, Fillmore Road, is the natural gas, 13 megawatt natural gas plant, that operates, you know, not often, but a season of different capacity, but this really moves that from, from one balance sheet to the other balance sheet. I would, if you want to point out the differences, they're two series, there's an A and a B, the A is our typical tax exempt bonds, the B, bonds are being sold tax exempt, or, excuse me, taxable, that is being done for, just in case we ever want to hook up to the greenhouse for the CO2 and heat, that that gives us some flexibility, or if it ever, for some unlikely reason, ever was sold, that it would be easier to get out of that being a taxable. The difference is about 50 basis points, or 60 basis points, or half a percent difference between the two rates, so we are paying a little bit, but again, with rates, so if you had told me I had less than 2% interest rates a year ago, I would have jumped up and down, so, we just paid 4% if we were to do this.
Other questions? I don't mind, but the only new money is to redo the substation?
Technically, they're both new money, I want to be clear, but, but it's really, but it's never been formally through the bond process on the, through the agency sold, but yes, the only new money is really, because we've always been responsible 100% for that debt, the only new money is for the Butter's.
What is the Butter's Avenue substation, is that a new facility?
This is, be a new facility.
A new facility?
New facility, and what that does, there's several benefits, most of them are operational, we'll be able to, to, right now, we're a little overloaded at times in the summertime, so it'll take the loading and spread the load evenly, there'll also be some operational issues, it'll give us, you know, like if I want to turn power off and send it to one place if there's a break, or, you know, operation, do some things of that nature. The other nice thing is it'll also add capacity for any expansion out there, so really makes it, because with the greenhouse, they fill out, you know, that is on a separate transmission ring, but all the others will if that goes out there.
And that moves that with consumers, you know?
Well, consumers, we, we don't have consumers bill. I'm joking, yeah, that's the, it really, it's built into the rate, so there's no immediate impact, I can't, I don't have it quantified.
Rate hikes on payment?
There, I don't see a rate hike, we're still working on revenue neutral hikes, I mean, at some point, there, I mean, it's obviously adding interest expense, but it's something that we need to do in order to grow the system.
Questions for Jeff, three? Yeah, they're looking for us to introduce and adopt, vote in at 8:30.
Motion to introduce and adopt, vote in at 8:30.
Support. We have support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Number 13, this rule in front of our roll call, the letter from Keith regarding the sale of 25 months in this area. Keith, why don't you refresh our memories?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So back on January 27th, you placed this as first reading for the proposed sale of 25 months in, to Ted and Amy Short, they offered $5,000 for the property, the property is, was purchased by the city through the state tax foreclosure process, it's now set on the table for over 30 days, it's required by charter, and while we did have a couple people as a result of the media coverage after the first meeting, they took a look at it, and nobody else has expressed interest, or offered any subsequent offer on the property to compete against the Short offer. So with that, we're seeking your consideration of approval of Resolution 2008, and Agreement Number 2002.
When you go adopt, support. Any final questions? Would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Phelps.
Yes.
Councilmember Penn.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissney?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Fexwell?
Yes.
Eric Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number 14, a letter from Keith regarding the MISHDA MOD home grant amendments.
Thank you, Your Honor, as part of the grant that resulted in the construction of the home at 74 Thompson Boulevard, MISHDA, through the course of that time, since adoption of the original agreement, has loosened up, or made more flexible, their income requirements for persons interested in purchasing this, this property, or any subsequent property if they were to be financed in a similar way, and this is not only affecting us, but affecting the other 10 communities that participated in the program. So what this does is make it, increases the, the income limit by which someone could purchase our house, so up to four-person households, they would have to, their income would have to be less than $73,320, and for five or more, they could actually make up to $96,840. But to implement that, we need a change in our grant agreement with MISHDA, and that's what this does, through the adoption Resolution 2010. So this is freeing up, making more flexible, or increasing the range of the incomes by which someone could purchase that house.
What was the original income?
So the original income was $73,320 for a four-person home, but there was prorated amounts for lower numbers of persons, so it was in the 60s for a three-person home, it was in the 50s for a two-person home, and similarly, it went up, so for five thou- for five-person household, it was, I believe, $78 or $79, and it went up from there per person in the household, so what it really does is it makes the limits higher for smaller number of households. For those five, six, or seven-member households, it's a higher income limit, and for one, two, or three-person households, it's a higher income limit for them to be able to purchase that building.
Even update on, has been any activity in that hall? I know you mentioned we've had people that weren't eligible, they're interested.
We've had a lot of interest in it, and a few people that have wanted to buy it, but so far, no one that's, and we haven't marketed it heavily yet, we still want to complete the yard, and we did include kitchen appliances that were installed last week, but, but to date, you know, we haven't had anyone that's come through that's met the income requirements yet.
So, individuals with smaller households, it actually increases how much money they need to make? If I understand correctly, so it's a, one family, one, one of all, three kids, two kids, they would now have to make up a specific... If I understand correctly, so it's a, one family, one, one of all, three kids, two kids, they would now have to make up to seven degrees?
No.
Can they be more?
More, yeah. So previously, I don't have, I don't have all eight, I don't have all eight levels in front of me. But previously, if the one-person household could only make forty-five thousand, now they can make seventy-three.
Any other questions? Uh, therefore, no more questions. They're asking us to adopt resolution two thousand and ten, please. Support, motion.
Support.
We have motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number fifteen, letter, letter from Megan regarding proposed donation of three fifty West Pearl Street to the City of Coldwater. Megan or Keith?
Sure. About a month ago, we were approached by Dennis Shook. And he indicated that he and his two brothers, Bergen and James, were interested in giving a small parcel of land at intersection of J and West Pearl to the city. Their dad had purchased this from someone who had purchased it then for a tax recoder sale in the early two thousands. And the three brothers inherited it in two thousand and six. It's about a tenth of an acre. It's got no structures on it, although it does have an easy number four, I believe, wastewater?
Store.
Store water, okay, store water drain on it. Um, it is, as I say, tenth of an acre. It's S E B indicates it's total cash value of about five thousand dollars. It is not a big tax parcel. I think that last year's taxes were about nineteen dollars, maybe for two thousand and seventeen. And we wanted to bring this to you to make the decision. It is not really a particularly buildable property, but it might be useful someday to be aligned in the road or something of that nature.
Well, since we already have the storm, we're sorry, the storm structure on the property that would hinder or limit what it could be used for. And it is at the intersection of Pearl and J that we would be willing to accept it, and they're not seeking any compensation for it.
Questions?
Give something more for Dave, or someone, Dave can vote.
I'll spend that tax money really fast.
Who wants to go to the point, your little triangle across the street in the room?
I can find out, but I don't have my hands.
Just, that's city right.
Oh, that's it.
Yes.
For every moment.
There have been discussions internally, and we've actually applied for a grant, a safety grant to do realignment of Pearl Street, US twelve, and Mill Street, and whether or not we could abandon that section in there.
Stand by.
Yeah, one, we already have a storm structure. We occupy the property in one, I already know the structure. Two, it would add flexibility, and if we already want to realign Pearl, if we abandon that area, if we swap it for these three properties, we could, that's a flexibility there.
Little plan order, just what they had taxed, and they should come to us or anyway.
Well, potentially, potentially. Well, even under that scenario, we probably, unless, unless there were no bids on it, we'd have to pay something for it, so.
I'm going to approve the resolution and agree.
Okay.
Support.
Motion, we have support. Any final questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number sixteen, we've all been waiting for, the presentation of the two thousand and eighteen annual police report. But you're trying to, thank you, your honor. You need a body, girl.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to come and present the year, uh, proposing report for the police department. Brought Deputy Chief Beeman with me, and he's, might help me out from time to time, fighting stuff. Anyway, so with the cover here, one of the things I found interesting about the cover, if you notice the photo, that photo with the police officer was taken on November fourth on the Heritage Park. One of the things I wanted to do when I first got started was to have an organizational meeting and get all the members of the police department in one place. For you that are not really familiar with the schedule of the police department, it almost never happens. We pass each other, we, you know, offer twenty-four-seven service all year long. But I thought it was going to be very important to get everybody at the same place, so we could kind of reach some goals and some direction that we're going to head in the future. So, and I'm not historian in the room, but ran it all. I think this is the biggest photo of core police department personnel that I can be able to find in one group, so. Deputy Chief Beeman took the photo for us, and he did some pretty fancy camera work to get the camera set up and then order and jump in the photo. So I thought that turned out very well. So the next slide is, when I first kind of took charge and I started really looking at things, I realized that our vision statement, our mission statement, and some of the things that we were working on are pretty old and dated. And I wanted to try to update those and make sure I got those off the staff. And so I was actually up at the FBI training, and anybody that looks at a lot of FBI websites, you might see some very close similarities to this. And I kind of borrowed some of their formatting that they use. And so, you know, we pushed this out to staff, and we're going to be regularly pushing this stuff out to, to staff. You know, obviously, the mission statement is where we're going, the mission statement is how we get there, and then the strategic policies and the core values are, you know, the tools we're using to try to get there. These are the things that we kind of came up with, and I felt were going to be important as we move into the future of the police department. Unfortunately, my daughter was helping me out with this PowerPoint, and I let her take a look at it, and she said this slide was way too boring, and it should be better. She marked me down a little bit for that one. We're moving forward. So the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about stats, and I put together, obviously, a much more complete report that you guys have access to. This is kind of the presentation, but this is kind of an overview of the criminal complaints throughout the year. And if you look, there's kind of a couple of neat things in there that I, I kind of predicted probably would happen. First is the narcotics violation going from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. We obviously saw a big decrease, and that's obviously a direct kind of correlation to the de-criminalization of marijuana. One of the things that we have seen still in narcotics, that we're still seeing a lot of methamphetamines, and we're still seeing a lot of heroin in our community. It's a little bit unique, because the methamphetamines, we're not seeing meth labs like we used to, but methamphetamines is being kind of brought in through some of the cartels, and it's kind of taking place from marijuana, because the, some of the cartels, marijuana is not a real lucrative business for them anymore because of the legalization in the United States. So that was kind of interesting to see the drop there. The next thing is, we saw a pretty big increase in auto thefts. That was kind of a direct correlation to one suspect who'd been involved in stealing many cars. We were able to actually apprehend him, and he's currently incarcerated. But he is kind of having a little mini spree there, where he stole several cars, kind of back to back, in kind of a real quick succession. A couple other things, you notice, like the accidents are pretty much stable across the board. Total number of calls for service are pretty stable across the board, and. One thing you noticed on, and the, the parish where it talks about increase and decrease of crime, a couple of those ones have real big numbers, or real big jumps, is because they're normally really small related crimes, like the homicides and the, the arson in some of those cases. We don't normally deal with a ton of those types of complaints, so when you have, you know, a, a click there, sometimes it makes the, the statistics a little bit skewed. So that takes us over to the next slide, if you can show it. So this is kind of a, kind of a, shows you a kind of graph of the history of complaints, where they've been. You basically have three different types of complaints that the police department deals with. We deal with total calls of service, which is the gray line at the top, non-criminal complaints, which is the orange line. Those are complaints that we respond to, and we generally don't end up with some type of criminal prosecution, probably writing a very intensive report. And then the criminal complaints at the bottom in the blue. And so you can see statistically, across, you know, since two thousand and ten, two thousand and nineteen, crime and the number of calls of service that we've had at the, of the core police department have been pretty stable. And this year, we had a slight increase in calls for service, but it's a, it's pretty stable across the board. Sometimes I find it very interesting that the, the stats and some of the things come out as close as they do from time to time, from year to year. So, I'll take us into the highlights of two thousand and nineteen. So in two thousand and nineteen, these are some of the things we accomplished at the police department. We got a new door access, electronic door access program installed. This is really big for us, because we had some old push buttons, syntax locks, had been there since the original building, the building. One of the major problems with that was every time a employee left, we had to change the code, or we had to learn the new code. And it was getting to be pretty expensive at times, that you had to lock stuff, come back and reset that. So that was a, a great opportunity, and it's working well. We were able to upgrade and get a new canine patrol dog. His name is Havoc. He's a Belgian Malinois. One of the really good things about this was, he is not trained in marijuana. There was going to be a lot of arguments and discussion whether a dog had been trained in marijuana, you could, you know, kind of declassify that dog of marijuana. That, that basically, everybody said that's basically impossible to take that over out. And so that's, that was a good thing. Also, this dog is actually a full, full narcotics dog, which means he can do like building searches, some apprehension work. Where our first canine, Orin, was just a black dog, he was a good tracking narcotics dog. So that was a good thing. Another thing we did in two thousand and nineteen was, we did some specialized training in de-escalation. You know, over time, we do a lot of training on P T C, and that's defensive tactics, you can use the force thing. But we've never really done a lot of specialized training in de-escalation. A lot of times, our police officers, they go to situations where things are emotionally charged. You know, everybody is kind of maybe the worst one of their lives, and it's really, we want to focus on trying to make sure our police officers are trying to de-escalate and, and slow situations down, try to make the best decisions there. And then last thing, we went through and basically updated all of our process for tracking for use of forces and planning some administrative laws. One thing that we are now doing, we are actually tracking every use of force up to compliant handcuffing. So every time that we come in contact with a lady where we put handcuffs on them, we do a form, we got that through the M M L, some of the insurance people were kind of having recommended it. It's really went pretty smoothly, and it gives us a lot better kind of, kind of a sense of where we are and that type of use of force situations. So then we move into projects for two thousand and twenty. These are some of the things that, when I first took over the director position, I discussed, the manager, and kind of plans that I'd like to see the department move in. One of the first things we talked about, and I'd really like to do, and we're kind of had the wheels kind of turning on this as a school resource officer position. Through partnering with the Coldwater Schools, we realized, any given time, once a new school we built, there'd be close to three thousand kids over a pretty dense area of our community. We are regularly up there right now, and the vaping issues, marijuana in the schools, sex, the intruency, reckless driving, larcenies. We, we pretty much respond there for a pretty wide range of complaints. We feel that having a school resource officer embedded in the school system will help open lines of communication, and will really do a better service to make sure that kids in our community have a safe place to go, and we're really looking forward to that. Another thing we're trying to move forward with the body cameras. Ever since I became a police officer in nineteen ninety-six, we've had in-car cameras. I think we're probably actually the first police departments in the state of Michigan go to in-car cameras. We actually do, and these old VCRs, and you put in VCR tape and pull it out. And so we are looking, moving forward with body cameras. We really think that will do a really good job of helping protect our officers to, you know, when people come in and make, you know, accusations, we can do a better job of getting a true picture of what actually occurred there. And it also will be very helpful for potentially for prosecution of, you know, criminal events. You have more evidence, and a better opportunity to put together the best criminal case that you can. So we, we see that there's a lot of positives in that area, and we're trying to move forward with that. Another unique situation, currently we have five female sworn police officers, and we have five civilian employees. We have a female firefighter, and then we have a female reserve officer. And so we have had more females working for the police department, fire department, public safety buildings, than my entire career here. And so we kind of uprooted our locker room, and so we're really looking to try to get to a, a, a bigger locker room that will give better access for everybody, and so we're really trying to build that in the future. Couple of the things that we're looking at doing are going through the MACP's accreditation process. The accreditation process, the MACP came out a couple years ago. It is a kind of scaled-down version of CLIA. CLIA is an accreditation system that's really meant for police departments greater than fifty. MACP is, is came one that's a little bit scaled down, and they have like a hundred and twenty proofs. But it really makes sure that your police department is using the best policy and the best practice. And it brings in other people to kind of audit you or look at your policies, make sure you're doing the best you can. And a kind of piece of that is the Power D M S. Power D M S is a software that's kind of specifically designed to help with the accreditation process and tracking of policies and all that type of stuff. So that's kind of the goals we're looking to try to accomplish and as we move forward. The next slide, community outreach. Now, I'll go through these pretty quickly, because I know Mr. Buck said to keep it short, and I feel like I might be running a little time frame. But, um, community outreach. I truly believe that community outreach is the most important part of our police department. It gets us out in the public, it gets our police officers opportunity to know people in the public, it also gets people in the public opportunity to know our police officers. It makes us real humans rather than just people in a uniform. So some of the things we've taken part with is the Shot at the Cop program. Been following that for, I think, the last five years, four years, and that's been a great program to help kids in our community. You know, we have officers that are stopping, helping try to people clear snow, and different things like that. If you go to the next slide, we have officers that, we had Officer Crim Border went down to Tryon University, and was at a symposium down there talking about women in law enforcement. And that culturally, how much that's changed, just in my career, the numbers of women in law enforcement is growing, which is, is a good thing. We do community presentations, we've done it for the branch kind of reorders, community, for our community schools and fedis, or pines, and a wide range of others. A lot of things we're getting asked for, or they really want, is help in setting up active shooter programs. You know, it's honestly, every time there's an active shooter type incident, people start reviewing their policies, their procedures. And they really want to know how the police department responds, what type of resources will we bring to the table for active shooters? So we, we really do a lot of that, and we do it really a wide range. Couple other things, you seen that one of the officers was up for Military Appreciation Day, and then we also been going down to Career Day and talking to the O J T kids, and that really plays into kind of improvement of some of the younger kids who are coming up in law enforcement and move forward. Next thing, United Way. If you've seen this fall, a lot of the guys grew beards. One of the things with growing beards, we did is a fundraiser to help donate for Shot at the Cop and also United Way. And we did No Shave, November, Don't Shave December, and we're able to raise quite a few funds and help put money back in the community. We had a gentleman from the coronary that wanted to remain, nine of us, came in and donated a bunch of teddy bears. We had those our control cards, and we've been passing them out to kids that maybe are not having the best day, that maybe they've been involved in a situation. And a little bit tried to humanize us, and also maybe one of the kids having a really bad day, make it a little better. You guys heard about the handover care quite a bit already, but that's something we're still for taking in, and, and to move in the future, and we'll keep kind of moving forward. Takes us to the next slide. Patrol scenario days. We've been sending officers up to K C C. This is kind of another method that they were looking at for recruitment. They've invited us up, and we help in their academy. Our O J T officers, or, yeah, our, our O J T. Our F T O officers have been going up there, and it gives us the opportunity to meet some of the people in the academy. And it also helps us, you know, kind of talk a little bit about the core police department and give us a foot in up there with some of the kids that are going through the academy a little bit. We participated in real man reformation, full checkups. We did a couple of cleanups down at the park, we're actually getting ready to do another one of them at this church, coming up here. Like more to go down and take in some of the community vets that are going out. So that kind of just takes us down with the changing of the guard. You know, Director Bartal, thirty-seven years of service, and he's left, and two thousand and nineteen, I took over as the acting director. And we kind of keep moving forward in that direction. Deputy Chief Beeman, we promoted from lieutenant to deputy chief in November of two thousand and nineteen. He's been doing a really good job of that. Three new officers we hired, we offered off. Three new officers we hired, we offered Officer Brian Regan, Officer Sarah Gunbon, and Officer Greg Moore. They're all currently through their F T O process. They're out on the road working now currently in our community. All doing a very good job and very well received, have very diverse different backgrounds, different life experiences. But that's one of the things I think that will help make our police department a better police department future of some diversity. Not to... real quick, Kathy Wester also left our department. So that takes us to the next thing, diversity. Our police department right now is probably the... is for sure the most diverse group we've had working in the city of Coldwater in my experience here. We've brought a female sergeant. We have two direct Yemeni Arab people that have grown up in our Coldwater Police Department. They're now working for us. We have a third that's a reserve officer working for us. And, you know, nobody in our police department has hesitated at all. It's been kind of full speed ahead moving forward. And one of the things we did to try to... behind the head, we formed a rec soccer team. And some of us, our soccer skills are not as good as others. But we went down, we had some fun, and there are some pictures of the guys out there trying to play soccer, some are a little better than others. But we did win our championship in the thing next to a goal by one of our very veteran police officers. Ended up in a shootout, and it was a... I'll tell you the story before that, but it was a very good thing. So the last couple of slides here are just kind of some stuff. I wanted to make sure I thanked Director Bartel for, you know, his years of service and also kind of, you know, mentoring me. He helped me out numerous times in my career. And I definitely not made it to where I am without his help and support. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledge and thank him. And then the last two slides. So for you guys that didn't know, I've actually taught classes at K C C as adjunct professor in law enforcement. And I teach a class on that for problem solving. And one of the things we talked about is a guy by the name of Robert Peel, who wrote the Metropolitan Police Act eighteen twenty-nine. And he really... these are some of the very fundamental policies of law enforcement. And I always look back at them at times when I kind of figure out which way we should go. And one of the things that he talked about is the police are truly the only services that are out there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that are looking out for the safety of the community. And our police officers currently are getting more and more things kind of, you know, offloaded on. But it's mental health issues, homeless issues, you know, substance abuse issues, the social media, the intensity of some of the things that are... And so I just, you know, think it's very important we realize that that group that's out there is the group that is trying to make our community a safe place to live and work and raise our kids. And I think that's very important. Then the goal, the last slide here, one of Robert Peel's policies where it says, recognize always the test of police officials that has a crime disorder or not visible, that's police action to deal with it. And I think that's really fitting, and that's really the goal that, you know, I want to try to promote in the police department. Is I want this to look like a very safe place. I want it to be very free from, you know, a crime of disorder. And I don't want it to look like there's a police officer standing on every corner, you know, watching over the top of everybody. So, you know, these are kind of things that, you know, I'm really trying to promote in our police department and kind of go moving forward. With that, I'll open up for questions, or anybody's asking.
Questions for Director? Got to tell you, I think Director... Deputy Chief Schultz last month, and your report today have been two of the best updates we've had in many years. And I think on behalf of council, I thank you all, and you know you have our support. I would like to ask, since you brought security with you, I'd like to ask Officer Beeman, if he has any... He'd like to... you've been an important part of this community for a lot of years. Do you have any observations?
I don't have anything to add, but Director has said, happy to be here to continue my service.
We appreciate it, we appreciate all of you, you all. If there's no other questions, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
You're a very...
Yeah, the last slide, our Attorney General, what place on my work, I know, would like to address the council, and they do so now.
Just an hour.
Any unchained business that I like?
You were talking. You just looked.
A new business to council level? We do have one item, if you want anything else, we'll be asked to go into closed session pursuant to Section eighty D of Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six to discuss land acquisition. So if we're still inclined to do that, we need a motion, we need a low call, we want to go into closed session. So moved, support. Put these tapes about.
Councilmember Penn.
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick.
Yes.
Councilmember Metcalfe.
Yes.
Councilmember Hesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Holt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman, yes. Councilmember Metcalfe.
Yes.
And the chairman?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be reconvened after the closed session.